Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Budget Hearings. My name is Deborah Gross and I chair the Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs. The department we will hear from today is the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh. First, I'd like to invite the Housing Authority to... well, actually, no. First, I'll ask our Budget Director, Peter McDevitt, to give us a brief overview, and then we'll have a presentation by the Housing Authority representatives. So, Mr. McDevitt?
Thank you. The mission of the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh is to bring a higher quality of life to City of Pittsburgh residents by creating safe, affordable housing in conjunction with comprehensive support services, attentive property management, and forward-thinking real estate development strategies. A quick overview of the HACP. It is governed by a Board of Commissioners. The Board is charged with the task of establishing goals, approving policy and budgets, and providing general direction to the Executive Director. Currently, Reverend Ricky Burgess serves on the HACP Board of Commissioners on behalf of Council.
That's it. If you don't mind, could you please make sure you introduce yourselves for the record and proceed with your presentation. Thank you.
Okay, I'm Cass DeBinyan, the Executive Director of the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh, and my staff will introduce themselves.
Bernie McGinley, the Chief Financial Officer.
Andy Tenney, the Controller of the Housing Authority.
I'm Darnell Parker, Budget Manager.
Okay, the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh, our budget for 2024 is $196,786,331, and that's a balanced budget, $196,786,331. We spend $33 million on total budget for MTW, which consists of capital improvements that we would have. Total units, we have managed in 5,775 Housing Choice voucher programs, and I think we have about 300 of those that, you know, people have vouchers and they move to the county. As far as the mixed finance and low-income public housing, traditional units, we're looking at 3,163 units that we are operating. The Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh roughly provides services for about 27,000 people. You know, if you take consideration, the average family is probably about three people per family. And our operating subsidy received from HUD is $64 million. We just have money primarily to do different programs. The Housing Authority of Pittsburgh received $50 million from HUD this year before we called Choice Neighborhood. This will be City of Pittsburgh's second Choice Neighborhood. The first one was in Larmour. We just now completed building 334 units in Larmour, and we also have the biggest playground in City of Pittsburgh. Just a little commercial. On the Hill, $50 million that we received from HUD for Choice Neighborhood, that would consist of roughly about 884 units that we're going to build on the Hill. That process would basically take about seven years. The Housing Authority have created lots of affordable housing in the City of Pittsburgh. Primarily, we use a product we call Gap Financing, and the way that's set up, if a developer received 9% tax credits, they could get up to $1 million from the Housing Authority. 4% tax credit, roughly about $5 million. That comes down to about $90,000 to $110,000 per unit, and to build affordable housing in the City of Pittsburgh is cost $500,000. So, the Housing Authority have figured out a way, working with partners and other people's money, to stretch the availability of affordable housing in the City of Pittsburgh. We normally have Gap Financing where people can bid on it. I think this year, I think we had about 13 developers who bided on this development deal that we work with developers to increase affordable housing. The Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh moved to 412, the new building. It is great. It's a great place to work at, and it definitely helps with our recruitment. Have you ever been to Building 200? Outside of that, like I said, our mission is affordable housing. We are very innovative in the things that we come up with. We have a national reputation, the City of Pittsburgh, which we call Team Pittsburgh, with HUD as far as a city that can get things done. And that is represented by City of Pittsburgh receiving two Choice Neighborhood grants, which consists of basically about $80 million. The Hill situation is going to generate maybe about $800 million worth of activity in the City of Pittsburgh. So, we continue to use our resources to purchase affordable housing in the City of Pittsburgh. We just recently purchased a large building in Lawrenceville, 40-plus units. Check that. But we also bought two other products in the city for affordable housing. As gentrification moves towards the city, the Housing Authority with its partners, the URA and other partners, we continue to find ways to provide affordable housing in the City of Pittsburgh so our residents can stay here and their families can stay in Pittsburgh and be able to afford housing for the workforce. Any questions?
Does anyone else have a presentation? No? Okay. For the record, we're joined by Councilwoman Warwick, Councilwoman Strasburger, Councilwoman Coghill. Is there anyone else online? Mr. McDevitt?
Nope.
Thank you. Apologize, I can't see the monitor to know if there's a council person online. So, I'm going to open it up to council members for question. I'll start with Councilwoman Warwick.
Yeah, hi. Thanks for being here. Yeah, so I actually have quite a few questions, so I appreciate you being here. I guess my first question, just sort of general, just sort of about the Board. So, how often does your Board of Commissioners meet?
I'd say 10 times out of the year. We normally don't have a meeting in August and November.
Okay, and there are currently seven Board members, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and how many Board members can you have total? Like, how many is allowed?
I believe seven. It depends on the size of the city. I don't know how to technol... I mean, the words related to it, but we are a Class II city, and that Board is based upon that Pennsylvania law, state law.
Okay. And then, okay, so 10 times a year, and what's your attendance at the Board meetings? Would you generally say, are you able to reach a quorum at all 10 meetings every year?
Yes. We've been Zooming for, I guess like everyone else, for the last 36 months or 24 months. Next month, we will have our first live meeting at our new building at 412.
Okay. So, you're able to reach a quorum at all 10 meetings?
I believe so. I can't remember one that we did not have. Yeah, we're okay.
Okay. Cool. Thank you. So, yeah, so I'm going to start out, I'd like to just sort of ask about the Housing Choice voucher program, the Section 8 program. Just so I'm clear, this is my first time doing this too. So, normally with the Housing Authority, the voucher funding sort of goes, the Housing Authority acts as like a pass-through, right? Where HUD, the money goes straight to landlord. But with Pittsburgh, the Housing Authority, HACP, you get block funding through Move to Work.
Correct.
Right? So, you get like a chunk of money.
Correct.
Okay, so how many vouchers is HACP funded for?
We budget for about 5,700 vouchers, and HUD gives us avocation roughly over 7,000. And we take the delta and we create what we call Gap Financing, what I just talked about recently. And in City of Pittsburgh, as far as participants, landlords, it's just about... for example, if I issue 100 vouchers, only 33% would lease up and find a place. So, we use the Gap Financing to create additional units, and I can tell you, I'll look it up in a few minutes, and tell you how many additional housing that we help create in the City of Pittsburgh. This is brand-new housing. And also, in addition to that, we buy places to close that gap.
Right. Yeah, I'll get to that. So, okay, so you're funded for 7,000 plus?
We'll say 7,200.
About 7,200, okay. And then, and how many active vouchers, did you say?
I think we said, I think, looking at this one, I think it was 5,775. Oh, well, that's what we budget for. So, I would say that we probably under, a little bit under 5,600. Is that right?
Yeah.
So, there's 5,600 families in units with vouchers?
Yeah, 5,600, and we have provided over... we're getting ready to hit the 700 mark as far as providing new keys to families in the Housing Choice Voucher Program. And on the Public Housing Program, 300. So, totally between the Housing Choice Voucher Program, the low-income public housing, over 300 people moving in this year, and we have 64 families that we assist with URA, our partner, in purchasing new homes this year. So, that's our numbers.
Okay, and so how long is the voucher waitlist? Like, how long is the waitlist?
There's 45 people on there right now.
Okay.
We're getting ready to reopen it, and anticipate...
Oh, right, because it's closed.
Yes, it's closed. We'll probably be open in the next 60 days. I anticipate maybe 15,000 people will apply.
Okay, so there are 15,000 people. And how many roughly of those do you think would qualify for the people who are applying? How many? I mean, I know that's like an estimate.
Oh, man, that's... I would say about 80% probably qualify.
With about 80%.
But when you process the numbers over the years, you might average about 33%. That's a good number we normally work with, because, you know, people move. You talk about 15,000 people, and we probably reduce that to 7,000 in a random selection process, but that takes about five years. And so, as people move and the list gets purged, and so I'd say maybe 33% to 40% are the people who have opportunity to use their vouchers.
Okay, so what you're saying was that the funding that you're not using, the voucher funding that you're not using for vouchers, is going to new build?
Yes, and purchase, acquisition.
Acquisition and new build. What about maintenance on existing properties?
No, we...
Or is that separate?
What's our budget on there?
Is that a separate budget?
Yeah, that is actually a separate budget, yes. That's under our capital budget, which I know we have under MOD.
We have...
We currently have approximately, we're adding seven more million on the MOD side this year, but we, in the pipeline, we already had like 60 million in the pipeline already. That's the existing units.
Okay. Okay, so I'm sure you're aware, there've been some articles, some public source articles that've come out. So, one of them cited high staff turnover, which, you know, makes it difficult for the administration of the Section 8 program. You know, calls and emails that don't get returned, or, you know, rent payments to landlords that are behind, Housing Authority payments to landlords that are behind, you know, landlords who are accepting vouchers. So, how, I guess, how many employees do you have total?
Yeah, I'd say about 280 to 300. I didn't bring that number with me. However, what I would say about the Housing Choice Voucher Program, in the last six months, we have hired a lot of people. We have stabilized the workforce, but we had to retrain them. In the last two years, we, yes, we had problems. So, we have worked through those problems, and we feel that in the next 30 days, the problems that we had in the past, they would be eradicated. And we have trained new staff, we have good morale, people are working hard, they take ownership in providing quality service to residents and landlords, and I feel that we have worked through most of the backlog, and we should be out of this thing in about the next 30 days. But I had to remind you that we basically replaced all the staff, and then we had to retrain the staff to get to the point where we're at now. And my new staff, I would say 90% of them are trained now in a task that normally takes a year and a half to learn. So, we was able to train them in six months by putting them in different cohort teams and rotating them at certain times when they master certain tasks.
Okay, and that was with the contract with...
Mm-hmm.
CBR, right, 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 yeah.
Yeah, we have a contract with a third party to assist the training and also to assist in processing landlord contracts.
Okay, okay.
So, like I said, I think I said we, what did I say, 647 new contracts so far this year. By December, we should be pretty close to 1,000.
Okay, so specifically for, I guess, is it an oc... so who is it that man, would it be an occupancy specialist that sort of...
Housing Choice specialists.
And so, how many Housing Choice specialists do you have?
I'd probably say 17 now.
17?
In different types of roles, yes.
Okay. And what would be, so what would be the caseload for...
The way we work them through this backlog, we put them on different teams, and next month, the caseload will run between 4 to 450.
400 to 450?
Initially.
Per person?
Per person.
450, like, residents per person?
Residents. The norm for this business is about 500 to 550 or 600.
Okay.
Right, so we're kind of reducing that stress as we come out of this situation, and then we probably normal back up to maybe 500.
And so, with a, when you have a case person, does a, so if I'm a Section 8 tenant, do I have a direct line to an individual who I can call?
At this time, no. You make contact with a team. We have technology and stuff set up for that, but we had to go through that transition as we train our cohorts, but people will be contacted with individuals from the Housing Authority. We use a whole lot of technology.
And what about landlords? If a landlord needs to call?
The landlord can call. A whole lot of landlords call me, so it's... We also have landlord meetings. We meet with them once a month, emails, like I said, a whole lot of technology. Like I said, we not, we understand we had a problem, and what I'm saying is that that problem is basically almost over. But those landlords, they do have contacts to my managers, the director, the chiefs. Matter of fact, I have a special landlord phone, just in case they want to call me.
You personally, you mean?
Customer service.
Okay, that's what, all right.
Customer service.
So, there's a specific line for landlords that's different from the tenant line?
I guess you could say that. Landlords send a whole lot of emails and texts, I mean, texts. What I'm saying, we have a smooth line of communication. I'm not going to say it's a dedicated line, because you can call to the Housing Authority, but emails, texts, and we also have 412. At our building, we process about 60 families per day that comes down there.
So, do you have like a customer refer, like a customer management system? Like, where it's all in the system, or is this like email and phone, like, you know, like calling to like a phone line?
You know, for example, if you, if you're a landlord, landlord, they want to turn their inspection booklet, they go online, they send it to a port, which goes into a database, and the database we're processing, then we get back to them. That's the model that is set up, and that's the model that landlords are used to, and we have improved some of those with Adobe Sign. It's kind of like, you can do everything basically online or interaction that way. The culture has changed that way, but we adapt to, you know, one-on-one conversations if necessary. The landlords, and like I say, they have phone numbers, and they can contact leadership immediately.
Okay, so I guess when I say like a CRM system, what I mean is if I'm a landlord and say there's doc, whatever, like, whether it's documents that need to be signed, or I have questions that need to be asked, is there a system where it's like, where as a worker, I log in and I'm like, these are my ticket items, it's in the system?
Yes.
As opposed to like email where, like, you could look in the system and see my ticket?
There's a landlord portal that they can use on the internet, on our website.
Right, and on your end, on the Housing Authority's end, that's what I'm asking, is there like, so, say I'm covering for somebody, or say somebody leaves and a new person comes in, can they sit down and they have the tickets?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not just like in someone's email or whatever?
No, it's not scattered, it's structured. It's not scattered, it's structured.
So, it's in a CRM system, is what I'm asking?
I don't know what you mean by CRM system.
A customer relationship management system?
I would say that, yes.
Okay, okay. So, yeah, so I want to ask about, so again, yeah, again, from these articles, so I wanted to ask about overdue payments to landlords. So, how, currently, how many overdues, and, but I mean...
Yeah, I know what you're talking about. I would say that currently...
So, how many overdue payments?
It's probably about 60 right now.
60 overdue payments now? Okay, so there's, okay.
Let's say about 60.
And has this decreased since, I guess this article was in July?
Yeah, it has decreased significantly, so it's kind of like, I had to get the staff trained, nanny trained, and now we're going back and clean those things up.
Okay. So, and just, what happens to tenants when the Section 8 payments are delayed?
Generally, we work with the landlord. That's why I would say we work with the landlord. Most of the tenants are, they're okay, we just have to make those back payments. Tenants pay their portion, 30%, and we come back and pay a half payment, which is other portion of the rent.
Okay. Have tenants ever been evicted because Housing Authority payments have been late?
I would say that there have been situations where we had to intervene.
Why, I don't mean the tenants' payments, I mean the Housing Authority's payments.
Yes, yes. There have been situations where we had talked to the landlord, and we intervened and stopped that process. It might have been one, but we might reverse that, that's all I can remember, but I know that when that get to that critical task, my staff or me would personally contact and work those situations out with the landlord.
Okay.
Now, right now, we are, we normally process, we run check runs, we used to run like once a month to landlords, now we run them every Wednesday. So, we ramp up to get those payments out as quickly as possible.
Okay, okay. And then, for the tenant's side of the payment, right, the 30%, or not 30% of their income, is that correct?
Yeah, 30% of their income.
30% of their income.
Income, right.
So, what services does the Housing, because I saw on the website that you do offer support services for tenants of a variety of services. What do you offer, or I should say, do you offer services to kind of help ensure that the tenants are paying their portion of the rent in a timely manner?
Well, on the Housing Choice Voucher Program, if they participate in family sufficiency program, we would have wrapped around services to assist them. If tenants have probably paying rent, we work with Jess, is Jess calls? We work with, we have worked with Action Housing. I think that we, the Housing Authority was able to collect like $2 million in back rent working with Action Housing, and so we do work with third party to assist people who had difficult times in the last 36 months.
Okay, and then, so, yeah, so you said, okay, so you have a CRM system, so I was going to say with issues for landlords, because, again, in this article in July, there was a report, a three-year study, starting in 2020 and just wrapping up, that, you know, showed very low interest of, by landlords, right, in the voucher program, and that most landlords cited difficulty working with the Housing Authority.
Yeah, and if you read into the article, I probably have a statement in there that say, yes, I know where we're at at this point.
Right.
And it's coming soon, six months, and I think we are better placed in six months.
Okay.
And like I said, 30 days, we'll be at a different point.
Okay, so have things...
Let me say, we had the same issues like everyone else, is trying to hire people. We had to do a whole lot of things to motivate people to work at the Housing Authority, just like everyone else. It was a challenge. It was what you call the Great Resignation, where people just didn't want to go to work. And so, we had to go through that challenge, and we did. We had to figure out how to train people in a task that take a year and a half and six months, and I think we have done that. So, I think whoever wrote that article, I think they would be seeing me by next 30 days, so we see what they write the next time.
Okay.
All right.
Actually, that sort of tells you, what is the, so for a housing, just, I mean, for a housing voucher specialist, what is the salary for that role?
I'd say a little over, maybe $54,000?
$56,000.
It's 56,000?
56,000.
Okay, 56,000.
And with benefits and all of that?
With benefits, right. We have the benefits, so...
Okay, yes, oh, so you mentioned the Advisory Council for the landlords. How many times does that count? You said once a month?
Once a month.
Okay, and how much participation is there, sort of, of your total landlords? What would your participation be?
Well, it's about 25 people.
25 people, and how many landlords do you have total?
Ooh, that's probably about 1,400, 1,500, but you have, some of them are critical mass, and then some of them are mom and pops. So, we have about 50% of mom and pops and about 50% of critical mass. What I mean by critical mass is landlords who have 25, 30-plus units, somewhere around there.
Right, right, right. And are these all, are these things that we're talking about, is this all stuff that you've heard from the Advisory Councils?
Oh, yes, they, yeah, they, some of them meet with me one-on-one, they always give me advice.
Okay.
So, how to, and we put, we have implemented a whole lot of the programs, you know, just like in City of Pittsburgh, we had to come up with a new payment standard, because we had to compete with the market. As you know, the last two years, the market in Pittsburgh as far as rentals had went up, and we had to come up with a program to keep our landlords, because we had to compete against the market. And, you know, it gave us ideas, and we have implemented those ideas.
Okay, okay. So, I guess, how many new landlords did you get over the past year, do you know?
I don't know, but this, what I would say, is we had a landlord program that if you're a new landlord, we would give you $1,000. And, and you probably know that number, how much did we spend? But anyway, we did, I don't know, I would send that to you, I don't know offhand. I know that we spent over, what, $100,000?
Yeah, it's something, 150 to 200.
About $200,000, $200,000 for new landlords, and we also created a new program that if a landlord spent over $6,000 in a new unit, we give them a higher payment standard, which matches the market.
If they, oh, if they pay $6,000 to renovate?
Yeah, they spent $6,000 to prepare a unit for a Housing Choice Voucher Program.
Okay.
They can use a different payment standard than we have now, and that payment standard is matched market or a little bit more than market.
Okay, and how do you, how do you market to landlords? Because, I mean, I will say, this is a, I mean, for a landlord, certainly for a mom and pop landlord, this, it's a good deal, right? Like, getting your rent paid is the hardest part of being a landlord, so having the bulk of your rent paid every month by the Housing Authority is good. Like getting your rent paid is the hardest part of being a landlord, so having the bulk of your rent paid every month by the housing authority is good.
It's good.
So what, yeah, so how are you marketing to landlords?
Well, yeah, my, my, uh, marketing department, you know, they use the, the normal, uh, advertisement, and then, uh, there's, uh, word of mouth from landlords to talk to other people.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we just use the traditional marketing, uh, campaigns, um, you know, radio media, social media, Twitter and all that other stuff.
Um, it'd be interesting to see when the rental registry program goes into effect, if there's a way for you all to access that, right?
Yes.
Right.
To market to landlords. Okay, uh, so, let's see. All right, so, so you're working on the changes since July, I, I know you set your goal to be six months since July, so it's been four months, so you've got two months to go.
We're gonna make it.
Okay, so, so you say you have a thirty percent, so, so is it, you, you, when you say the thirty-three percent, that's thirty-three percent of people with vouchers that are able to find a place?
Well, the way I say it is, if I issue a hundred vouchers,
Mm-hmm.
thirty-three percent would be able to find a place, in the city of Pittsburgh.
Yeah.
So that's why our marketing campaign to give landlords a thousand dollars after they sign up for the program. Uh, we also, the six, they spend six thousand dollars, we give them a higher payment standard, which, you know, you, you know, it's, it's a business. And, uh, you know, I guess, uh, two years ago, if you want a one-bedroom, one bedroom was roughly seven, eight hundred dollars in the city of Pittsburgh. Now, a one-bedroom is, is one thousand thirteen hundred dollars. So we had, we had to compete with the market, so we were able to do that.
I'm gonna use my powers here to say, Councilwoman, you've had about thirty minutes, and we've been joined by Councilwoman Lavelle online. We've been joined by Councilwoman Kail Smith, we've been joined by Councilwoman, or Councilman Wilson. I do appreciate your inquiry, but if you wouldn't mind, I'm gonna let the other members have their time, and we can return to your questions if you still have them, I appreciate it.
Yep.
And if members wouldn't mind also, um, Councilwoman President Kail Smith, um, I'm gonna jump to, uh, President Kail Smith if you're ready for your questions.
Can I make a statement first?
I'd prefer you not.
Okay.
Thank you. You can respond to council, the, the protocol for the table is that you can respond to council members' questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is Councilwoman.
Thank you, um, I just wanna, usually I, you know, beat you up every time you come to the table, but I do want to thank you very much for the work that you've done in Ferrywood and the work that you're doing across
Thank you.
my district, and you held true to the promises you made to the Sheridan residents, which I've never had a meeting where Housing Authority attended where Sheridan didn't shred them apart. And he shred them, and I want to be honest, over the past year, so they have, they have been more than pleased and actually stopped inviting you to the meetings. So I think that that's a good sign for, for them.
Thank you.
But in, in our area, I want to thank you for the affordable housing that you're building. One of the things I wonder is, you hear all the stuff with the homeless population, everything that's going on with the unhoused population in the city of Pittsburgh. And, um, some of my colleagues are talking about tents and other types of ways to address the issue. I'm wondering, is there any possibility the Housing Authority has buildings, and has there been any tracking, has some of this happened since you have, um, stopped some of the, um, housing complexes and, and started spreading them out in more scattered sites? Was there more availability before then, uh, when there were more centralized, um, housing units? That's one, that's one thing I want to note, and two, is there any way that you would consider working with developers that have vacant buildings, donate those? You know, they can write them off, allow us to get wraparound services within those buildings? Any of those things that you've discussed or talked about or think of, yeah?
So the first one, uh, as far as homeless, uh, population, we work with Allegheny, the Housing Authority has set aside vouchers, uh, for anyone who is homeless and loans they authenticated through, uh, uh, Allegheny County, uh, uh, programs.
Right.
And, uh,
But can I just say, but with that, you have to have the availability of the affordable housing for them to use it, you have to have landlords willing to participate. And I know you've gone out of your way to make sure that happens. But I'm just, I have a lot of concerns about what we've done, but I do think what you've done in my district has been really beneficial to help more people get housing, so I want to thank you for that, but again.
On the second one, uh, we have a program we had talked about earlier, the Gap Finance Program. If a landlord, uh, want to participate, uh, you give a building to him, the developer, yeah, if they want to improve that building, they, uh, uh, they can, uh, check with Housing Authority about a Gap Financing where they can get project-based vouchers to assist them with that process. Or they might be eligible for the one million or the five million, depending on what they put in the tax credit. Uh, we are always open to anything that can create affordable housing. So I encourage you, if you have someone without me violating compliance and HUD rules, I will have the discussion, the tone, everything that's in my toolbox to assist them in affordable housing if they, if these developers want to do that.
We were actually just talking, Councilman Colko and I, about someone who has property, they volunteered to donate, but it's in McKees Rocks, I think. Um, so it's outside the city, but I know, but would you work with the county for something like that? If that was the case?
I don't know, I have, I don't, I have lines I cannot cross.
Okay, I have lines I can't cross, but I cross them all the time.
Yeah, but my last day.
I cross them all the time, but anyway, um, but, but just basically, I just, you know, and we also had that, um, issue with Justin in Mount Washington, where the residents complained because you had a housing unit filled with people that needed help, and people were sleeping on people's porches, breaking into their home. You know, there was all kinds of things that they had to deal with with that. So I understand that you want to have people close to amenities, but you also have to worry about the people around them that you're, you know, that they're safe as well. And so it, it just really is a challenge, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I agree, I, I, uh, we try to create a culture that, and we have, which just like on the West End, like, we always talk, you should not know the Housing Authority houses on the block, that we blend with, you know.
Let me just say, a lot of times people think they know the Housing Authority, huh? And remember, I remember the one time I turned seventy-nine properties into you from Sheridan, and only, I think, three of them were Housing Authority properties. But people were certain that they were. So I just want to say that part, but anyway, I do want to thank you for your work you've done in my district and, um, willing to work with you and hope that we can work a little bit, uh, more together on some of the, um, unhoused population and see if there's something we can find there.
Yeah, I agree with you, I think that, um, the Housing Authority have a big imagination, and, uh, we constantly, and-
Big imagination and big budget, so let's try, let's try to do something there.
I don't know about big budget, but anyway. Yeah, we can come up with something.
But I will say, I do want to say that thank you for the housing in Ferrywood, it will be, was it forty-four units of affordable housing for the next forty years? Um, patio homes, which is an absence of, in the city of Pittsburgh, so thank you very much for that.
We worked on that for ten years.
Thank you, yeah, you promised, thank you.
Thank you, I'm gonna go next to our regular order and, um,
Thank you, Councilwoman, thank you.
Thank you, and go to Councilwoman Strasburger, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you for being here, and thank you for hosting us at the, uh, your new office space this last summer, those meetings were helpful.
Thank you.
And I also want to congratulate you on your newest choice neighborhoods, um, award, and that's a sort of a high point in, um, you know, another feather in your cap. Um, I do want to go back and focus a little bit on Section Eight voucher programs and the line of, um, the line of questions that, uh, my colleague, Councilwoman Warwick, was asking. One question I was, was curious about is, um, and this is coming from a motivation of wanting to see more housing diversity, um, more, uh, low-income housing, um, in the neighborhoods that I represent, especially along transit lines. So, you know, well-resourced neighborhoods, do you have any sort of, like a surgical approach to targeting areas near transit lines or transit hubs, um, for marketing to encourage more, um, uptake of, of, and participation in the Section Eight voucher program with those landlords in particular?
Yeah, um, I would take a look at that, but, uh, I think we send you, um, and we have, and you should receive a map. Did you receive a map, uh, may my staff haven't sent out yet, it's a map of where all the Housing Charge vouchers,
Mm-hmm.
were giving the addresses,
Mm-hmm.
uh, where the clusters are at, and there's Housing Charge vouchers based in every neighborhood in the city of Pittsburgh. So, if you guys have not received that, I will be sending it out today or tomorrow. And it will give you a profile where all the public housing is, it's an overlay map, and then we can look and see how close they are to transit lines.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Uh, we have, uh, put in program, programs, uh, to motivate landlords to participate in the program. And, you know, like the six thousand dollars, if you purchase a house and, and you improve that house, you get a higher payment standard, which you can, you know, kind of match the, the market.
Yeah, are there others that you haven't mentioned yet that we should be aware of that would be, provide incentives to, um, to property owner, rental property owners to participate? Especially newer ones, who might have that one hurdle to kind of get over, you know?
Yeah, I have some more, but I'm, I'm not sure I want to announce them right now.
Okay, so something in your backpack?
What I'm saying is, we always trying to find a way to get landlords to participate.
Yeah.
And to get landlords to participate is to work with them timely and money, so, we're working away to do that.
Are, what kind of hurdles do you hear from this landlord advisory council? I, I mean, the one, some that I've heard of just through talking with people have been, and those who work with landlords are, you know, um, um, if not insurance, assurance of a guaranteed, um, security deposit, um, additional incentives, you know, cash incentives like that.
Okay, so, well, uh, the federal government had, uh, programmed emergency voucher housing program, and that program was designed that they assist, um, tenants with down payment, I mean, um, security deposits. Uh, uh, they provide the landlord additional money, uh, we use that program, we have a, a veteran program that we use. Um, we have partners that assist, uh, applicants in, in, in security deposits. I, I don't really see that a big problem right now, uh, because there's always some type of resource out there to help. You know, for example, we, the Housing Authority was able to collect two point two million dollars of back rent, and I believe, uh, some Housing Charge vouchers landlords was able to do that. Uh, money that was allocated, that was processed through Action Housing. And so I think we have programs out there, it just, and, and it just that residents have to fill, or applicants have to fill the paperwork out. Uh, our issue is, as a government-type agency, is compliance. We have to have the paper to justify the payments, so sometimes that's a, that's a struggle, excuse me. Sometimes that's a struggle, um, sometimes. So.
Great, um, and my last kind of set of questions relates to your relation, well, I guess, relationship with others, so one, I'll just start with is, what's, what is your relationship with the land bank? And, you know, how are you kind of seeing that as a, a potential benefit to the Housing Authority?
I don't know, I have my answer for that one, um. We work with everybody, anyone. So I don't know where the land bank is, is at right now, I do have one issue with them, um, uh, around homeownership, and I think we're working through that process, the Housing Authority and URA, we, we have completed closing on sixty-four homes this year. And I'd like to see more homeownership so that families can build wealth, and that there's a calculation, a method to make that work for families. Uh, forgiveness, you know, with the Housing Authority, you know, after ten years, you know, you don't have to pay us anything, all the equity that you build that house, you'd be able to keep it. I think most of the questions about, around how much equity a family can keep if they, uh, they sell their house. And the American dream is, you buy a house, you create the money, then you send your kid to college. I mean, that's the type of model that we look, look at, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, so I, I look forward to, uh, to working with them, but I do have a representative, um, on their board, or, or, I guess, okay. I have a representative who participates with the land, yes, sir. Yeah, I have, I have, I have a, someone who participates.
Great, that's great to hear, that's great to hear. Um, and then lastly, I think, think there's a lot of, um, potential, um, exchange of ideas and, you know, um, innovation over here, innovation over here. How do you work with, uh, the county housing authority in that way?
No, we're best friends.
And so, uh, you know, are there examples of times where they've tried something and you've borrowed the idea?
No, okay, so one, one day that we, we are working on something that, that would benefit both, uh, uh, Housing Authorities and landlords, uh, we in the process of putting that in place. I just don't want to discuss it right now. Only I gotta say, we continue to find ways to encourage landlords to participate and, and keep them satisfied.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Okay.
That, but I guess we will be making an announcement here pretty soon.
Look forward to that announcement.
Okay.
Thank you for being here today.
Thank you, Councilwoman, I'm gonna return to the order that council members, um, joined the meeting, so, um, if you'll give me, uh, Councilman Colko was here before you, Councilman Wilson, so I apologize, I'm just gonna jump in, yeah, I'm sorry, Councilman Colko, do you have any questions?
Yes, sir.
Morning.
Morning. It takes five hundred thousand dollars to build one affordable house, right?
Yes.
How is that? What do they cost?
Government.
Yeah. So it's not material, it's not labor, it's administrative.
You have, it's labor.
Yeah, well, of course, I mean, that's all factored in, but that's not what inflates the cost.
So you, uh, if you look at Davis Bacon, uh, some developers, you know, they might not have to use that. Uh, we have lawyers, we have HUD, we have, it's our most, lots of that, the extra hundred thousand dollars, I would say, I probably just say lawyers.
Right, 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 that's, that's what I'm trying to figure out, and you have sixty-four units complete, averaging, sold, averaging, to build five hundred thousand dollars.
No, no, let's change that. Okay, the sixty-four units that families in Pittsburgh purchase,
Yep.
uh, that's not five hundred thousand, five hundred thousand is brand-new units.
Right.
These are units that was, they were turned, and families drove by a house and saved for sale, and they took advantage
Gotcha.
of the resources of URA and Housing Authority.
So the five hundred thousand dollar average to build new?
Correct.
Right, and how many have we built?
Built lots.
Lots?
I, I'll tell you in a minute, I might have to look.
I mean, roughly, you know, I don't need the exact numbers.
Probably about fifteen hundred or more.
Fifteen hundred, yeah, and not in one year.
No, so we built, okay, so the, we built three hundred thirty-four in Lomer. Um, we did a lot of gap financing, probably about three hundred plus units, I would say fifteen hundred plus units, I mean, I have it on my phone in a minute.
That's over, how long of a period?
Could be ten years.
So we're building at five hundred thousand?
Well, it, it wasn't always five hundred thousand. The five hundred thousand just occurred in the last twenty-four months.
Right.
We was building units around two hundred fifty and three hundred thousand dollars.
Right, so doubled.
It doubled because of logistical changes, you know everything that been happening in the United States this year. You know, with, um, uh, logistics and, and backlog and, and the workforce. We have the same problems as everyone else, but on top of that, we have compliance, we have extras that we have to do because we spend in federal government money.
Right.
And there's our requirements.
Sure.
Can I add a piece?
Sure, please, please.
One thing to keep in mind with the, the new units, under the tax credit program, you're always building, uh, one-third, one-third, one-third. So we never get, you know, if we tore down a previous year, we never get as many back as we would have, so the number is lower because of the way they make you do the, the mixed finance communities now under the tax credit program. Now, he's, Mr. Ben has gotten around that by doing the gap financing, where we are getting much cheaper units and just our units that we're paying for and getting return on that as well.
So when we build a unit, um, what do we sell it for to?
Sell.
Well, we don't sell, we give.
No, no, we don't, we don't sell units, we, we, we try to get, we, we try to get fifteen years, twenty years affordability, or forty years affordability. We, we put ourselves in the first position so that, you know, just like Crawford Square, where the situation was that Crawford, Crawford Square came out tax credit, and it was in a position where it's going to be sold to the market. So the Housing Authority and URA and, and the city, we was able to purchase part of that. And so, uh, our deals that we make now, we always in first position, so when it come out of tax credits, uh, we normally, you know, refinance and put it back in affordable housing, but most of those deals have fifteen to forty years affordability, if, if we participate in those programs. And some of them is like ninety-nine years, so.
Okay, um, again, I, I appreciated the tour of your new space, again, I was there with Councilwoman Strasburger, and it's nice to see part of that building up and running, and your employees were great there, you know, they really were.
Thank you.
So the, um, incentives for landlords.
Okay.
So what are our incentives? If I have an empty unit and, uh, If I have an empty unit and, uh, I have to accept somebody with a voucher. And what incentives do you offer?
Okay, so if you a, a, a new landlord and you get on the program, you get a thousand dollars. Uh, if you a landlord who, who, before someone moved in, you spent over six thousand dollars, uh, we will put you on a higher payment standard. And that payment standard is closer to market. Could be a hundred forty percent, but average, AMI. So, we are getting a whole lot of landlords to start participating in that program. And.
Are landlords reluctant to sign up?
Guaranteed check, no.
Well, that's, that's what I figured. I mean, you know, I know a lot of landlords are accepting vouchers and, and we, we have to recruit them.
Yeah, I.
I thought they'd be waiting in line.
Well, I think this new program, I'm worried about running out of money. So, yeah.
For the incentives.
For the incentives. But we have to compete, so.
Incentives have been working.
Yes.
Let me ask you this, as far as like if I took one neighborhood and asked you how many vouchers there are, is that public information?
Yeah, I want to send you a map tomorrow.
Oh, is that right? I tried to get that information in the past. I tried to get that information in the past. Not from you, I, I can't remember who I was going through.
No, we used to send it like every year.
Okay, okay.
But anyway, it's an overlay of the city and it, and depicts, uh, where the locations at. We don't, we, we basically don't take your addresses. Is what we kind of tell you, you know, and I think it was broken down by city council members areas.
Council district.
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah, I would be interested in that.
So, so if you don't have that.
Is there a limit per neighborhood that you use or is there no limits? Wherever you can get a landlord to accept.
It's a per-house issue. It's, uh, you can live anywhere in the United States.
As you said, you know, as you said, President, it's, uh, you shouldn't be able to tell the difference between a voucher. Well, that's what I was asking, but, you know, whether it's, well, he says it's not.
We, we, we try to, we try to balance. We try, we try to balance.
But there's no regulating it.
There's no regulation.
Well, no, you're not allowed to saturate an area. You're not allowed.
Well, I don't know. He's saying that.
I'm saying they'll get sued.
Well, that's okay, you know, I, I don't have that, I, I'm not asking you because of the issue, I'm just curious. So, uh, it's not a real problem, at least not for me.
Okay, so you asked me about these other questions. The first one, I think, uh, recently, they would create a hundred thirty-seven, uh, project-based vouchers completed, which totaled four hundred ten units. That's mixed, um, using our gap finance program. We have sixty-seven on, on, under construction, then we have another ninety in, uh, in the pipeline. So those are units that, that five hundred thousand dollars I was talking to you about, these are brand new units. The Housing Authority have came up with a method to get your houses built from ninety to a hundred and ten thousand. So therefore, instead of Housing Authority spending five hundred thousand dollars in a hard debt, Housing Authority only spending ninety to a hundred and ten thousand. So that means we're going to triple amount of affordable housing that we can provide in the city of Pittsburgh. So.
Now, other than the incentives for the landlords, a thousand dollars, is there also, you, do you put up this security deposit that they usually require?
There are programs that they can use, or there are resource friends that we have that assist. You know, like Action Housing.
They get, just as they would rent to anybody, they're going to get their security deposit. Their, our incentive is the extra thousand bucks.
Right, and, and, um, and the guaranteed payment.
That's, that's what they like best about it, I know. So, okay, uh, that's it for me. Thank you for being here. I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Chair. Um, how's it going?
How you doing, sir?
You know, I was recently sent a couple photos by one of your staff members. And, um, I'm really happy to see that you put that security, uh, you moved the security desk at Presley.
Oh, you, you seen it?
To the front. I'm in the know, I'm in the know, you know.
But that was your idea, wasn't it?
Was that?
Was that your idea?
I mean, yes, yes, it was my idea. Yes, it was my idea. I appreciate you saying it was my idea.
It was your idea. I'm not taking credit. It was your idea. And we executed.
I appreciate that. And I think it's going to be very helpful. You know, I think that, so basically, you know, you could probably describe it, but the, um, security desk was away from the door. So people could come in and they could go left or right or sit in the lounge and, you know, but there was a lot of complaints about people coming in that don't live there. And, you know, getting into certain activity that residents there didn't like, residents outside of the property didn't like. So, I think it's best that we're just showing like, look, we're seeing, we're checking right when they come in the door.
Yep, they come in, back into place of better, safe place to live.
Yeah.
Thank you for your.
Well, I love when people take my idea and run with it. But it, it's, but anyway, it takes all of us working together and I appreciate, it took, it took, just like any government thing, it takes some time. So it took, what, a couple of years? But we had to, you probably had to work some stuff out, but I'm really happy to see that, that, um, you know, that change. And, uh, and then I see the investment there, one and a half million dollars for twenty twenty-four. Is that what I'm seeing? H C V, I'm not sure what H C V means. Modernization, Presley High Rise, general monitor updates.
Okay, Presley High Rise, yeah, we're putting a new roof on and we're doing some other stuff in there. Uh, and, you know, you've been in there, we remodeled, um, uh, I guess, the community room. But right now, the big thing is the roof. And that roof is, what, like one point two million, something like that? Yeah, it's, it's, it's a very, well, we're doing some other stuff too.
Yeah, yeah, roofing's expensive.
Yeah, there's, well, there's some other stuff too. Society and all kinds of stuff.
What's that?
There's other stuff besides the roof, because when I seen that price, I said, wow. But then they explained some other things to me.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. So, the roof, the community center. And then, what, was the build-out included in that or was that last year's budget?
No, that was last year's budget.
Okay, nice.
The roof, the roof is, is, is very expensive, so product, labor. And it's some other stuff, it's part of that one point two million. I just don't, I can't, I can't recall it right now. But I can, uh, someone sent something over to you.
And then.
Why don't you take that note, please?
And then, um, well, I'll stay on this property. So for the grading, you, you know, you know, I'll bring this up. So you got the grades that, who grades you again? The national?
Yes, uh, HUD. You're talking about two years ago, three years ago.
Well, yeah, but annually you're graded, right?
Oh, right now, I would say.
So how, where are we at with Presley?
I know they got a passion score. I, I, I can't recall it right now, so I would send that over to you. I would say our REACT scores. React. That's from HUD. That's their inspections. Inspection scores are, uh, way higher than they used to be. Uh, so I can send it to you. They have not inspected Northview yet. But according to the last scores that we received, we have a very high percentage. I don't think, we have any, I don't think any of our developments, they have failed inspection from HUD.
But, but. Oh, so, so now you're passing all of them?
We're passing all of them.
Oh, great. That's good. With Northview as well, you expect that to pass as well?
Yes. It's a tough one.
What, what are the challenges? Don't worry, this is a public hearing. You can say what you want.
I don't know who you asked, man. You know it's a challenge. I try to be correct. People, okay, I'll just say that.
What do you mean?
People, uh, maintain the units properly.
Is there any way that we can, um, support that at all? I've heard this before, but is there?
We went to every unit, every unit, building by building, and completed all the work orders. And, and that ended up being something like maybe, I don't know, fifteen, two thousand work orders, and now we're repeating that process. And so, uh, people have to maintain the units, and they'll maintain the units. I got to do work orders. And as the inspections come, you know, if you got something, an inspection, the inspector's there that day.
So you're saying percentage-wise, or let's say rate, you know, the, the rate of, work orders are higher?
Yes.
In, in, in certain areas and others, and you're saying that this one is, is that case?
Yeah, we, we do about forty, fifty thousand, fifty thousand work orders per year. I mean, things that normally happens, uh, in other communities, we just have more work orders. More resources to use. And then we got to calculate, you know, how fast that we can complete those work orders based upon the work resources that we have.
Well, when's the inspection?
We don't know. They, they just called us up and said we'd be there.
They just start going in the properties and, you know, they judge, they, um, score the sidewalk, which. But those are some of the scores, but then also they're walking into some of the units and looking at the oven, looking at.
We're doing all that.
No, I'm saying they are.
They go to each unit. They will, they will do a random sample, which probably consists of about thirty-eight units that they would go to. And they were doing inspections of those units and also the community space area. As you know, we, we place a lot of concrete work up there. And so, uh, that's what they would look at. They would look at the outside. They would, uh, uh, look at community space and then they would look at roughly about thirty-eight individual units.
All right, well, I'm, I'm eager to see how those, um, results turn out. I'm eager to see the results of the, the, the scores, you know, when it comes out.
Oh, yeah, that's not a problem.
Yeah, so we could follow up on that. And, and then, um, I just want to go through a bunch of things that I'm noticing and, 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 uh, Northview that are really great that you're, you've been doing. Do you want to talk about it or you want me to?
You said the word great, just talk.
Speed humps, you listened to the.
Yeah, we put speed bumps in.
You listened to the, um, you know, to the residents, they wanted that. It's your street. You invested in that street. You partnered with the, uh, you know, the after-school programs.
Yes.
Built new bus shelters.
Yes, we did.
You also, uh, or partner in open the, um, uh, the public safety center there.
Yes.
And I, I think that, yeah, violent crime has been down. Uh, and then also, um, you have, you're falling through in your commitment to doing the splash pad.
Yeah, so.
And you're gonna, and you're gonna build a water tower.
We are going to build a water tower.
To make that happen.
To make that happen. Also, we're going to build forty-four brand-new units.
Right, you're gonna combine that water tower with the new.
Right, to, to provide the water force that we need to have on top of that hill.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, but when is that, when is that water tower going to be built?
Uh, we're waiting for the, the architect to come back, uh, uh, with the drawings. They'll probably be building twenty twenty-four.
Well, I'm not, I mean, I guess, would that be another line item? Because I'm only seeing eight hundred thousand here.
Well, that might, that's part of.
And I mean, I know a bit of water tower.
No, but I think that's, I think that's part of the twenty.
I think the water alone is eight hundred thousand.
So, so this is. It is actually in there. Well, a lot of it's part of the original Northview budget, which there's, I think, like you said, twenty-four million.
Twenty-three, twenty-four million.
Yeah, twenty-four million in already. So it was allocated in previous budgets.
Okay, great. Yeah, I'm sorry, what'd you say? The approximate date is you're waiting for the architect to come back?
I would make an assumption that we will build a water tower in twenty twenty-four. We went back and forth and decisions were made that we need to build a water tower. So then we had to go out and procure, uh, someone to do the drawings. And now we have to get someone to build it. But I anticipate twenty twenty-four, the water tower would be up.
All right, good. Other, um, and, and I was at the community meeting where you worked out with the gym hours and everything, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's all figured out?
It's, 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 yeah, it's figured out. After-school programs with boys, and we did build relationships with Boys and Girls Club. And also the, oh, oh, that's the Heinz Boys and Girls Club over on Northside.
Uh, yeah, I heard about that new addition. I appreciate everything you're doing up there. Is there anything that I missed?
I don't know, just so much. I can't remember all of it. Just one, it's one of all of the stuff that we do. We just, we just continue to provide customer service to residents, self-sufficiency, training opportunities. You know, for people to get jobs. Um, we work with a whole lot of partners. Our comment is, if you live in the Housing Authority, City of Pittsburgh, or you're a housing charge voucher person, and you want a job, we got a job for you.
Well, I appreciate what you're doing. And, and, you know, since I've been in office, I've noticed a difference.
Thank you.
In, in, in Northview. And, um, so, but I'm still, you know, we gotta go back to the, the grades. I'm still interested. And even though, you know, you're saying that the workers are up, I'm really interested in, I don't know, I mean, there's, there's gotta be other solutions out there to try and, you know, reduce the amount of work orders that you're seeing.
Yeah, uh, we, we try to, based on the resources that we have, I think that we keeping up on it. We primary on a routine work order. It should take twenty days.
Well, no, I'm not talking about the work, I'm talking about why the work order would be created. You know, like you're talking about, you mentioned.
You said why a work order should be created?
I'm saying you mentioned people. And so I'm just suggesting that I'm curious to know, to look into it deeper, to understand.
Uh, we can have a conversation about that.
Yeah, just, you know, whatever, whatever you're going through, I'm interested to know.
Okay, so, um, I set up a point with you, we can discuss that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think I just want to have a phone conversation about.
Okay, cool.
You know, steps, steps that you're gonna be, or, or, you know, some of the issues, I don't know, I just want to have a frank conversation about. You know, what you're seeing and if there's, you know, maybe I got another idea. I don't know.
I like your ideas.
Yeah, but there is leadership, you know, at Northview, so it'd be good to, you know, meet with them to understand, you know, what you're going through. So that, you know, they can honestly understand what, what's going on, you know, instead of just, you know, that conversation has to be had.
Yeah, we have a, um, I would say a great line of communications with the leadership at Northview. Yeah, we have, yes, we are great. And sometimes we have outside people who want to participate. But we keeping it all in our ego system, the family, and we work through our problems in Northview.
Okay. Yeah, because I know you do a lot of, a lot of good programs. I'm thinking, maybe there is some program you could tailor to Northview. Or, or, that's not even, that's not even, you know, pick on Northview, it could be other, you know, a, any properties that, you know, you see a high increase of work orders. You know, and, and what would be causing those work orders? Maybe there's, maybe there's somewhere out, because, I mean, I think the best case is just to show that the, you know, those grades go up.
I'm waiting for your ideas.
Because there's always, there's always other great things that are happening. I just want that grade to reflect.
Thank you.
You know, what's, what's, you know, you know, what you're trying to do up there as well. All right?
Thank you. Appreciate it. Steph appreciated too.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go back to Councilwoman Warwick. Thank you for waiting, Councilwoman Napoleons.
Thanks. No, no, I appreciate it. So, um, yeah, so I, I just wanted to go back quickly to the, um, the landlord, you know, the, the, the topic of signing up new landlords. Um, so I looked at the website for the process, like the process to sign up to become a landlord. So I understand that you have a pre-inspection program. Is that correct? Now, how long does that take? So if I'm a new land, I'm curious, right? I want to do it, or maybe I want to do it. So I call up, you know, I've got a unit that's ready to go, ready to rent, and I want to get it pre-inspected. How long does that take?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that, but I would say that we're trying to do it immediately. I mean, you don't lose, we need to seize the moment. I can get back to you on that, but I think the culture is, the culture is that if we have a landlord, you, you want to seize that moment. We don't want to let a fish get away. So.
Well, right, yeah. So, okay, so.
I mean, that's the way I look at it.
So, I mean, like, is it, is it a week? Is it a day? I mean, like, how long?
I mean, by time the, um, set appointment, I'd probably say five days. But, but I have to go confirm that. I'm, I'm just making a, a assumption right now.
Yeah, yeah. Um, but so, but apart from the pre-inspection program, so the website sort of implies that you kind of first need to, so first you mark it to the tenant. And then, so, so you find your tenant and then you need to make your request, right? But that seems backwards.
That might say that.
Well, that's what it says. So it sort of feels like, like.
I had to take a look at that because I think that if you want to be a landlord, you contact us, we're going to contact you. I don't.
Right, I mean, step one is like, I, I can't quote it, but it's like, you, you find your, you know, your tenant, you have a tenant. And now you are approaching Housing Authority with your tenant.
It's kind of like ninety-nine percent of the time. It's kinda like ninety nine percent of the time, the people will already have a tenant. The tenant, because the market is such that uh the tenant's gonna gravitate to any place that. You're gonna take a voucher.
But if. Right, but you wouldn't, you wouldn't advertise that you take vouchers unless you are already signed up to take vouchers, right? Like, if I, if I have a unit, I'm not gonna advertise that I take vouchers if I'm not signed up to take vouchers.
I would take a look at that, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, okay, so then, so generally, how long does it take for the the request for tenancy approval? The RFTA to be approved and for the rent amount to be evaluated? To get your rent estimate.
Data that I was looking at and the numbers coming down, I think it was like twenty days, the data that I was looking at. So let me, let me explain that process first.
Yeah.
Is uh a tenant will receive a voucher, but it would take him an average of about ninety days to find a place. So that voucher is. Is not recognized by the housing authority until we give it to a landlord and we set up an inspection, so those are days I'm counting. I mean, some tenants take up the, you know, they have to come in and because of the market, we had to add it, do additional thirty days. So it's not alive until a booklet is turned in, that's what the dates that we count.
Okay, so but but I'm just trying to, so.
Yeah.
So let's say hypothetically, I have a tenant who has a voucher, right, like I'm a landlord, I've not, I don't do section eight, but I have somebody. Who wants to move in, who has a voucher. So I come to you, so the system, so how long does it take then to get that approval? For the rent amount to be evaluated, for the rent to be estimated, like.
I would say the the first step is the inspection, I would say inspection take about twenty days and then it depends on. I ha- after tenant provide all the compliance paperwork we need. And then we, our goal is to have from the time that it get inspected, to the time we complete the contract in sixty days. And from the time the inspection, we would pay retro back, you know, depending on whether fifteen for sixteen, depends on when you turn in. That's, that's our goal. Right now, we do have a backlog, which uh should be. As I talked about earlier, should be uh eradicated here and. And like you say, the next thirty or sixty days, based upon what I said in the article. Um but at the end of the day, we wanna process contracts less than thirty days.
So. Okay, so, okay, so I, cause this is just from the website, from the process, right, for for new landlords. So so the website says that there is a five-day inspection period following the receipt of the RTAF.
Right, that's inspection booklet.
So you're saying that it, they should, they should account for like twenty days to get the RTAF in place and then another five for the inspection?
Now, that's part of what I'm saying, twenty days is the average. So if I'm doing. What, three thousand inspections, that's the, that's the average. I mean, you could be, the next day, it could be five days completed. I just give you an average, based upon numbers. Right there in uh an administrative plan that say five days. Then that's what we reach for, five days. I can meet with you later, if I have all the data in front of me, I'm just trying to recall from reports that I look at. But I know what the goal is, so.
Okay, and so and so then it says, so so then once all that's done, so you've got, you know, you've got the RTAF. And again, I'm just looking at the website, so it says that then the housing specialist has up to sixty days to complete the lease agreement between landlord and tenant.
Correct.
And then once it's signed, then there's another step, which is to, sorry, then the last step is to get the signatures.
Yeah, once you get the signatures, uh it's probably the next page, the next page around. So we, like I said, we run a payment four times, now we run them four times a month, every Wednesday. Uh we normally use around thirty days. And uh and all, all the contracts, they'll sign immediately, so we. You know, soon as that landlord sign a contract, w- we we process it.
Okay.
Right, so the.
I mean, so, I mean, the point I'm I'm kind of getting at is that. With the, essentially a sixty to ninety day process to get a tenant in, that makes it hard. Even if you, even if you.
Let me make a statement. Most of the tenants and the landlords, the tenant is already in the unit.
Yeah, but but I'm 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 not.
Okay, okay.
Oh, oh, I see what you mean.
What I'm saying is, the the landlord know they're gonna get paid from the date that unit got inspected. They let the tenant in the unit until we complete the contract. So the landlords will talk to you about contracts, that's what they're talking about, they they have people in their units and while housing authorities process the contract. However, we encourage the the landlords not to do that. Because they don't have a contract with the housing authority at that point, but what I'm saying, the Pittsburgh culture. If you're a landlord, you pass an inspection, you're gonna move that person in because you know that you're gonna get paid.
Right, but see, the thing is, is that I understand for existing landlords, so like, if I've got. Six housing, you know, if I, I'm doing business with you guys already, so I know the process, so I'm, if I get a new house, I'm gonna move someone in, I get that, right? But if I'm a new landlord and I've never engaged with the housing authority before. And and I am in Greenfield or in Squirrel Hill South, or maybe out in in Lincoln Place, these are all my district, right? I come in and I go, literally, like, I go to your website and I read through this process and I'm looking at a ninety day. Process, sixty to ninety day process, just to get someone in, just to get the tenant in. I'm like, forget it, man, I'm not gonna do that. And it doesn't say that I get retroactive rent, right? It doesn't say, it doesn't say any of that on the website. So that's what I'm saying, is I feel like that, that process, and I'd be, I'd be curious to hear what your landlord advisory council, cause I assume those landlords are already landlords, right?
They are landlords and they recruit other landlords, but I do get your point.
Yeah.
And uh and I have a solution, so.
So, I mean, you see what I mean though, right? I gotta, I gotta a house that's ready to go, I just, you know, I just moved someone out, I just painted the walls, I'm ready to get someone in and I'm like, oh, housing authority. This is a good deal, right? But then I see this process and I'm like, ugh.
Well, if I talked to her, I would convince them, so. But anyway, I understand what you're saying.
Okay, okay.
We'll talk about that later, I do have a solution for that, I thank you for that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, okay, so that's, so my last thing is, and um this is where things might get a little stickier.
Okay.
Um, the Glen Hazel High Rise is in my district, right? Um and I understand that that high rise is managed by a management company.
Correct.
Who who manages that high rise?
Come to me in a minute. Arco, okay.
Is it Arco? Okay.
Isn't that Arco, Pittsburgh's, Arco, New York?
Right, okay, maybe MMS? MMS? So what is the oversight of these management companies? Like, how are we, how are we auditing that they are fulfilling what they're supposed to be doing?
I have an asset management team that manage that, uh we have had some issues with Glen Hazel. Um but um I think most of those issue on, issues are going to disappear, we are, they are rehiring in. Person that was there before, they rented very well, I don't know if you knew her, Crystal, uh she's coming back. Um and we met with uh, I guess, Janet Evans, um you know her? Yeah, yeah, uh my staff met with her last week and they talked about some things and and we are interacting with the leadership. Uh to make the necessary changes that need to be done at the high rise.
Okay, cause I was just at the high rise on Friday and um. So I'll just go through the list.
Well, before you go for the list, um I would say we are putting new management in there.
Okay, but I still wanna go through the list.
Okay, well, I guess it gets sticky then.
Yeah. First of all, the door is broken, so you just walk in. There's no security guard according to, cause I talked with a bunch of people, there hasn't been a security guard for years. So the doors open, you just walk in. Uh this has resulted in at least one person with a PFA. Against her ex and this ex has been in the building multiple times now. Um, the trash has not been picked up in, and I I have photos of this. I went up to, someone invited me up to her apartment, I went up to the second floor, the second floor.
Okay.
The trash chute is full, up to the second floor and perhaps higher, I don't know, and I mean, the hallway, it's just like. You know. I went into an apartment, I saw, so apparently there's co- uh regular plumbing issues, like pipes breaking. Um and just plaster, just replastered over and plaster just crumbling, you know, and I I. I saw this, right, I verified this, as well as mold, like all in the bat, and you know, that just keeps coming back every week. You know, I said, and I asked, I was like, well, do you clean the mold off, like, do you, you know what I mean, do you, and she's, absolutely, I clean it and it's back in a week. Um, the elevator breaks regularly and there are sixteen accessible. You know, there are lots of folks with wheelchairs who live in this building, and so I talked with multiple people who have been trapped. Either outside their apartment or inside their apartment for eight to twelve hours at a time, because the elevator breaks. Uh when the power goes out, uh and 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 the elevator then also doesn't work. If it happens during the weekend, there's no one to call, because, I mean, you can call the number, but there's no response, no, nobody answers the phone. Um, and uh, yeah, and then there there, there was apparently a very robust tenant council. At s- at at one point.
Yeah.
Uh and I was told, and I, again, I don't know the details behind this, but I was told by enough people that it kind of, that. That they were told by the, by management, that that tenant council would not be recognized. And so they just stopped meeting because they were told that no one was gonna sort of take their, their complaints. Now, I can't independently verify that, but I heard it from enough people that it was a fairly consistent. Um and then the the last thing, and then this is of course related to the door and the lack of a security, and there's a space for a security guard, right? There's an office for a security guard. Um, is that in in the building is just that essentially, if 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 you. Wanna buy illegal substances, you can get it, like Glen Hazel High Rise, that's where you can go, and people don't feel safe. Um I talked with home health aides that work in the building regularly, that don't feel safe coming to work without some kind of protection on themselves. Um, you know, there's a lot of seniors who live in the building and people just don't, don't feel safe. Uh um sort of, you know, drug activity going on in front of the building. Um, so it's, it's, it's not great. And I I am, I feel, I I too, I I feel, uh because that, to be honest with you, it was the first time I had been up there. I went up to like a bingo and there was no bingo, but wow, I, I got, you know, so. You know, and so when we talk about money that's being used for for, you know. You know, move to work money that is being used to build new units and, you know, that's fine, but.
This is something different, that is a rad program that HUD has. Uh the, the management company, um they receive the money directly from HUD. Uh we kind of monitor it, but I would say that we're in the process of evaluate, evaluating if we're gonna keep a management company. There's a bit of situation with the housing authority, just like Manchester, we went in and took that place, just like it's another place we've been ready to take. And I can't go into that right now, but I'm hearing you.
Thank you.
That's what I would say.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I I will be, and I will be better about going back up there and making sure that those residents, you know, have.
Okay, so uh we will have a joint meeting, we'll walk through there.
Sounds good.
We'll set that up.
All right, well, that's it for me, I appreciate, I appreciate the time, I know it's a lot of questions, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Warwick. Um and I just have, um since we've gotten lots and lots of information, I've taken two pages of notes. On all the questions and answers from council members, so I really appreciate all of those. Um I asked last year a question about um. That a resident had explained to me that there's something that is the fair cloth limit that's set as a federal limit for how much. Um real estate and doll- I guess dollar values.
Yes.
That um each different city's kind of housing authority um can have and can't surpass. But that the housing authority of the city of Pittsburgh was well under its fair cloth limit a year ago. Um and I suggested be, a year ago even, because building new does cost five hundred thousand dollars a unit. Not just for the housing authority, but also that's exactly what I'm hearing for new construction in my own district, that's entirely private market. Um, that existing units, I'm, I was looking at real estate listings and seeing existing units at half that cost per unit. So what was the, the housing authority's capacity or plan to buy what are currently market rate units? That would be cheaper than building new, purchasing those and converting them into um publicly owned, entirely publicly owned housing. And uh and so I promised you that I would give you that follow-up question. Uh so, I know there, I know one in particular that you looked at in Lawrenceville, so if you could give us an update on kind of. Where is the housing authority in terms of converting market rate into subsidized housing?
Yes, that's what we're doing, we have, it's got about two houses. Uh four flat on Northside, six, and we have four in Point Breeze. And then we bought a high-rise building, which I believe is forty two, I don't know, it's numbers offhand, but. But primarily, uh we have bought a large building, uh that we in the process um. Are converting to fur cloth, I haven't, we haven't decided yet because of MTW, we had to calculate. How we get, what is the better deal for us, fur cloth, the plus for fur cloth. Units is you get additional three hundred fifty dollars subsidy for for doing that. But we have to, right, I see you writing notes, okay, so um. We have to analyze it, uh when we purchase these, we use a different type of money. And so we're in the process, I have HUD to accept these units. Um, because the HUD process take too long. And so if I see an ideal or I see a market opportunity, uh we have money set aside to take advantage of that situation. And then when we exhaust those funds, then we go to HUD and convert those units. And the money is, uh we recruit the money and start the process over again. Right now, I think we at the, at the exhaustion phase. But I think that uh we will replenish um. The money that we can go out and purchase right away, because on a HUD, you have to go through a process to, to purchase and by that time. Uh the owner would run away and they had to wait on HUD.
So did you close on the Lawrenceville? Okay, so you closed on it, but now the question is whether to keep it as part of your portfolio, portfolio that's wholly owned.
Correct.
Or to basically do some kind of partnership. Did I understand that completely?
I don't, I don't think we're gonna do a partnership, but I think that uh we trying to decide if we're gonna do project-based vouchers there or we're gonna do public housing.
Okay.
With public housing, it would give whoever lived there up to eighty percent median income. Would uh project-based would be six, fifty to sixty percent. And so you reduce the, you know, we're looking at the workforce um and incomes.
So I wrote down, if you keep it as an wholly public housing, then you would go up to an income range of eighty percent, am I? I thought it would be lower. I guess I don't, I really don't understand your programs.
Lower, it's uh.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, yeah, project-based. Just around fifty to sixty percent.
Okay.
Public housing, eighty percent.
Good to know, okay. I know that we have the parking authority waiting, is there any other questions from council members? Councilwoman Warwick, I'm gonna ask you to keep it brief.
Very brief, you just, you reminded me of something, so yeah, so I wanted, just in terms, cause uh. I think it was Councilwoman Wilson, I don't remember, mentioned the land bank, uh is. So my understanding is that you can also use vouchers to pay mortgage, right?
Correct.
So a- as an alternative to just new build, which as we said is super expensive. Is there an opportunity to work with the many CDCs around the city? Who to purchase, you know, get, well, once the titles are cleared through the land bank, purchase these properties. And let the CDCs do what they, you know, help, help with their funding to fix them up. And then sell, and then, and then sell them ultimately to the tenants.
We are in, so.
Okay.
We okay.
All right.
Right there.
Yes, and I think partially, are you talking about also the URA? Oh, oh, the site acquisition. Because we have gone through the URA for sixty-four units as well.
Yeah, we have done this with URA and we always looking for new partners. So there's sixty-four, sixty-two up and down, sixty-four.
Sixty-four is the.
Sixty-four new homeowners who bought rehab houses. And I think by the end of the year, uh, the housing authority put two million dollars in. And I think URA is, is still working this program until the end of the year. I think they exhaust all the money that the housing authority have. So there might be seventy-five, somewhere around there, uh, new. Uh, home ownership families. By the end of the year, I think that's what URA is trying to do. And then next year. The housing authority, I think we budgeted with two million dollars. And we budgeted two million dollars for a home ownership program. And the way that works is the housing authority put in forty, uh, thousand dollars per house. And combined URA and the housing authority, ninety thousand dollars of assistance. And, and housing authority still have another home ownership program. And we pay up to fifty-two thousand dollars and seventy, seven thousand dollars, uh, down payment assistance. So, and it's focused on families that eighty percent median income.
And then they also can get Housing Opportunity Fund as additional money or is that part of that money?
Uh, that's probably coming through URA.
Right.
Yeah, the, the, the other part of the ninety thousand, yes.
Okay.
I think the cap is ninety thousand dollars. Right now.
So that would be the combined.
Correct.
From you and the URA.
And, and, and they buy houses, um, I think they run in between. Hundred sixty to hundred forty thousand, somewhere around here, rehabs.
That's all.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's all for the Housing Authority of City Pittsburgh today. It looks like we may have to. Consider some point in the future, maybe a post-agenda where we talk about you and only you and entirely about you. But at this point, I'll ask you to leave the table. Thank you for coming and answering all our questions and I'll ask.
See you next year.
Parking Authority of the City Pittsburgh to join us at the table. Appreciate your waiting. Yes, please, um, Budget Director. Uh, I just forgot how to pronounce your last name. McDavid, please, tell us about the parking authority.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, the mission of the Public Parking Authority of Pittsburgh is to provide and maintain affordable, safe and clean public parking throughout the city of Pittsburgh. To uniformly enforce parking ordinances and laws in the city of Pittsburgh and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and the collections thereof. To advance the economic progress of the region and to do so with the utmost commitment to customer service. A quick overview, the Parking Authority is responsible for eleven parking garages, thirty-four off-street lots, one attended parking plaza, the Mon Wharf. Over nine thousand on-street metered parking spaces and thirty-three residential parking program districts. And also oversees the operations of the Pittsburgh Parking Court. Councilman Wilson is council representative on the Pittsburgh Parking Authority Board. And a quick overview of the impact on the operating budget, these are all revenues that we bring in from the Pittsburgh Parking Authority. They don't have any expenditures in the city budget. But parking tax revenue is at fifty-two million, five hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars. Meter revenue is at nine, just about nine point four million dollars. Parking Authority tickets is about seven point four million dollars and Mon Wharf parking is eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars. And per chapter two seventy-two of city code, twenty-six million, seven hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars of parking tax revenue, uh, is collected towards the city's pension program. That's all I have.
Thank you. Um, thank you for waiting in chambers, I apologize. Um, we have robust discussions, sometimes they're hard to predict. So, um, could you introduce yourselves and give us your presentation?
Thank you, Councilwoman Gross. Uh, Dave Ornato, Executive Director of the Pittsburgh Parking Authority.
Jody Hart, CFO.
Instead of recapping everything that was just mentioned, I'd just add a few other items. We were established in nineteen forty-seven, our headquarters are at two thirty-two Boulevard de Allies. We have a five-member board appointed by the mayor. Excuse me, a few other items, uh, that were not included. We established our own parking court in two thousand and five to adjudicate our tickets. We over, we have two unions at the authority, uh, both expiring. We have contracts through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. One is the ASME Union that handles the, uh, on-street meter operations and a Teamsters Union that handles the garage operations. Uh, we were recognized as a, uh. Parking Organization of the Year by the International, uh, Parking Mobility Institute. And, uh, in twenty seventeen, we were, uh, AP, got, received an APO, Accredited Parking Organization with Distinctions, which will go through twenty twenty-six. And we were the first US city to introduce or implement pay-by-play technology in the, uh, country. Now, a quick summary of our budget, I would just point out, you noted a fifty-seven million dollars in parking tax, I believe. I, I think that's what the city collects citywide. Our parking tax for twenty twenty-four is estimated in our budget of seven point seven million. Uh, dollars from the Parking Authority. So with that, uh. At last week's board meeting, we just passed our, uh, twenty twenty-four budget. It has, uh, forty-seven point three million dollars in gross revenues. Of those gross revenues, twenty-seven, uh, million will come from garage receipts, which account for, uh, fifty-seven percent of the revenues. Our meter receipts will, uh, account for eighteen point three million, which accounts for thirty-eight percent of the gross revenues. Those two line items alone will be ninety-six percent of our gross revenues for the year. Our total operating expenses for, uh, twenty twenty-four are twenty-nine point seven million dollars. Uh, with, uh, payroll and benefits, parking taxes and securities being the three largest line items in the expenses. Uh, we also create a, uh. We have a capital budget of eight point one million dollars, uh, with, uh, three point one for garage structural repairs. A million seven for garage revenues, uh, control equipment and seven hundred thousand for elevator replacement. That accounts for sixty-seven percent of the capital budget expenses. Uh, we also create, uh, uh, and establish a parking court budget, which is outside our trust budget and general fund budget. Uh, these monies are not dedicated to our bondholders. Uh, their, uh, net revenues go to the city per the, uh, parking court agreement. Our parking court, uh. Budget for twenty twenty-four is ten point six million with expenses being three million dollars. Our estimated payment to the city for parking court is seven point five million dollars. And lastly, um. Our estimated payment to the city in twenty twenty-four in our budget will be total twenty-three point four million dollars, which account, uh. Which is based on our co-op agreements, uh, and the parking court agreement.
Thank you. Anything to add? Nope. This time I'm gonna go out of order. I'm gonna ask our councilperson who represents us on the Parking Authority Board to go first, Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Chair. Good to see you. Thanks for coming down here and going through everything. Can you just, um, go over, you know, in terms of where we're at? You know, uh, from, what's the year we use, twenty nineteen?
Twenty nineteen.
And where we're at from twenty nineteen in terms of revenue on. You know, um, meter parking garages, which is roughly like what the percent, like how much we're still down?
Yes, uh, twenty nineteen, uh, Councilman Wilson's referring to is our base year prior to COVID. That we kinda base everything on and see how we're coming back and recovering from COVID. Uh, meter revenues are roughly, probably about ninety-four percent, uh, returned from the, uh, base year. And the garage revenues, uh, based on utilization, we're at seventy-four percent in our garage system wide now. We were at ninety-eight percent or higher prior to COVID. Uh, I think we have thirty-eight, we have twenty-seven million dollars in our twenty-four budget. Twenty nineteen, I believe, and prior, our budget for garage revenues were about thirty-four to thirty-five million dollars. Uh, in total, I would estimate based on, uh, our last board meeting, we're about ten million dollars off, uh, nineteen's numbers.
Yeah, and. It, it's been increasing since twenty twenty, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
We hit a low of eight percent utilization in the garages and, uh, we stopped enforcement completely and ever since twenty twenty-one, we've been coming back up now.
And some capital projects have been, have been installed, which the Ninth and Penn, uh, location was one of the ones that we had taken down. This was before my time, taken down to rebuild, right? That was the initial plan?
We had, uh, demoed it and it's a clean site now and we were ready to issue, uh, uh, the plans for, uh, an RFP for construction. The drawings were done and we were ready to go out, uh, issue new debt for the garage the week before COVID hit and we pulled back and. We're still reviewing on what to do there now, cause we don't have the, uh, money to go out for debt for a new facility.
So it's been ongoing conversation about just properties in general that the Parking Authority owns. And can you talk just briefly about the, the, um, the asset, uh, study that, that's been conducted or is currently being conducted? We'll see some.
Working with this administration, uh, we decided to issue an RFP for a citywide demand study of all our facilities to determine. Uh, what facilities, uh, would benefit us to sell and help, uh, be able to answer with data from developers who are inquiring to purchase our properties. Most of the developers were looking to request, uh, purchasing, you know, the high utilization, uh, property. So we wanted information and data to be able to back up which properties, if any, would be viable for the Parking Authority to sell.
And this would be to sell to. Someone who would develop for housing?
Yes, it could be housing.
Yes, we're not just gonna sell the parking garage or the property for them to build a new parking garage, right? We're not.
Correct, it may be for a better, they may see it for a higher, better.
I just wanna get that, yeah, I just wanna clarify that on the little part here. Well, uh, appreciate everything you're doing. Uh, I know that in the past, we've talked about, um, having our enforcement officers. Do the work that, uh, the police, typically the public thinks that the police should be doing. Uh, or have been doing, or they think, or they have been doing either one. Um, or that was our only option. You know, there's several different, you know, um, certain, different ideas about this. But I know at this council table, we've talked extensively about, you know, having enforcement done, um, through the Parking Authority that. Otherwise, right now, it's being done by the police, so, or not being done at all. Can you speak to what the Parking Authority officers have, like, the type of tickets they've been writing? Um, more than just, you know, pay the, pay the parking ticket fine?
Yes, we enforce all, all, uh, parking violations, but the majority are meter violations, street cleaning violations and, uh, lot violations. And RPP violations, but we will do, uh, violations based on signage throughout the city. Our issue today is the, uh, staffing level of our enforcement officers. Prior to COVID twenty nineteen, we had a total of about forty-two officers that was both full-time and part-time officers. Today, I believe we're at, uh, twenty-one full-time, uh, total officers. So we're, you know, thin on the areas of enforcement and we're being, uh, creative to, uh, shift them around the city. During the week, so they're not in one area and one violation.
But what's the percent of? Like where are we at? If we wanna be at a hundred, where are we at right now with the officers?
We're probably about just over fifty percent.
Okay.
But we are, we are looking at technology, again, I think we had this discussion offline about, uh. Um, automated enforcement with cameras, so we're looking for that, but we just need to get final approval on that. That would, uh, really enhance our efforts for enforcement and make us a more efficient operations for, uh, street enforcement.
Are you talking about, you're talking about the purple curbs or what are you?
No, this is, uh, just being a, we have the.
Oh, ticket by mail?
Yes.
Ticket by mail, okay, yeah, ticket by mail. Um, but I just wanted to talk about this. You know, there was an ask, there was a, you know, an agreement, whatever, you know, nothing's in writing. I mean, it's in the code that the, uh, Parking Authority can do that. And I've seen, even though we're at fifty percent, I've seen, you know, um, the officers take on more than just tickets. So I wanna thank you for that, because I know there are concerns of people parking in crosswalks and too close to the curb to see, too close to the intersection. Um, no parking, so we have taken on that. And I know there's always a push to. You know, have enforcement for parking on sidewalks, so I think the real conversation is how do we boost? The agent, the, you know, the agency to go up to a hundred percent. Um, you know, cause we want a hundred percent to be able to make sure that we're getting tall. You know, the, the metered areas. But also to do this other enforcement that I think every council member probably here would. You know, a lot of council members would have a similar question. And, and we've had a question here a long time ago. So how can we get to a hundred percent from your, from, from where you're, like, how, how do you think we get to a hundred percent?
It's been difficult.
I mean, we might have to add more, but just how do we get to a hundred percent?
From a lack of trying. Uh, we have a current posting, uh, through our HR department and he's using several avenues to, uh, try to recruit them. Uh, but for whatever reason, I think, uh, Housing Authority noted too, there's a lot of people just not willing to work today. And, you know, we're currently active and trying to recruit on a daily basis, but we just can't seem to bring people on board.
And, and the contract is fairly new. I mean, the contract with those employees was just.
Yes, right through twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, so it is a new wage that's in place. Um, so it's not like a. What's, uh, um, so. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think, I know, I'm always interested in how that, I've heard, you know, some of the things you've talked about that are challenges. So I don't know, I, I think it's something we, we need to figure out, cause as this continues to go on. I mean, uh, we need to figure out something together, you know, council, the administration.
Our, our new effort was to, uh, uh, we got in touch with the city, uh, Public School Board. Try to recruit seniors graduating from this, uh, high schools that may, uh, may not be looking to go on to college or trade school right away. It could be a stepping stone for them for a while. So we are trying to be creative in hiring people, but it's just, it's very difficult. And I don't think we're the only industry affected by it. I think a lot of the, uh, labor force in, in, uh, labor industries are affected by trying to hire people right now.
Okay, well, um, I don't wanna belabor this point. I just wanna say that, um, you know, I think you're doing a great job. Uh, at, at, um, you know, holding strong in terms of making sure there's revenue to continue to pay the city. Um, to make sure that, you know, we have revenue, as you noted here, for the pension. And, um. I always appreciate your willingness to have a conversation about what you can do for individual neighborhoods, whether it's, um. You know, renting part of the spaces so that a brewery can, you know, have live events in the summertime. You know, there's a lot of things that you've done, I think, for, you know, in and out of the North Side, um. Downtown and the strip district that I think is, is, uh, always good. And I'm happy to see that, that, um, that you always wanna have a conversation with what you can do for neighborhoods as well. Anyway, but. Um, and this isn't your fault at all, but I, I just think that, you know, as we move forward, I wanna, you know, try to really. And the conversation is always ongoing, but really try and dive into how we can get to a hundred percent. And I know you want to too, so it's not like, and I know you have some good ideas on how to do it.
But part of that solution too is, uh, we're looking at the, the automated enforcement. That would ease the level of officers we would need, because we would be able to cover a lot more territory with less personnel.
And where are we at with that?
Uh, we're having discussion with the city law department, but it's our understanding, it's authority that we need state, uh, statute change before we're allowed to do that.
State statute?
Yeah, and it's too big a risk for us to take it on, uh, without the change at the state level.
And who, um, who in the mayors also you, like specifically, like. So I know I've heard that in the past, but basically we need to pick that ball up and talk to our state legislators to figure out.
Yes.
How we can actually get that done. So that's the sticking point, you know. We, we need that, we need that, um, ability so that we can do our job here. Because we free up that, and we free up the time of the officers to do that, then instead of meter, you know, less time jumping out of the car for the meters. And then, you know, I don't know, maybe the, maybe the fifty percent is the new hundred percent.
If we would have automated tickets. If we would have automated tickets, that would be close, yes.
So, okay, all right, thanks.
And just the safety issue too. I think there's having that ticket by mail and having the thing that people might be more willing to take on the job because they'll feel safer being able to do it and they're not gonna be face to face with somebody that's angry that's gonna start taking it out on them.
Yeah, we should, yeah, we should note that we've had to have real officers walk with some of our.
Exactly.
Off, like, parking officers because of, you know, people just being very hostile towards them. So.
Good point, because we do do that on the south side.
Yeah, unfortunate. Well, thank you. Thank you, Miss, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I'm gonna go to Councilwoman Warwick next, if you don't mind.
Oh, yeah, sure, thanks. So I I don't have too many questions. I guess I'm curious, um, thank you for being here. Um, so with this issue with the state statute, like the ticket by mail, so are you saying city law says, like, like the city law department saying we can do it, but your lawyers are saying we can't? And we need, it's a state statute, is that?
Yes, there is a difference of opinion from the two agencies.
Okay, okay, all right. Um, is there any, is there any way, like, would 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 input from our state legislators maybe help with that? Like, if they could take a look at it? Because maybe they think, I mean, I don't know, I don't know what they think.
No, we have been in touch with them and we're using our legal firm and we're reaching out to the different state reps and that and trying to pursue it and fast track it.
Okay, then, yeah, absolutely, whatever we can do to help that.
Thank you.
That'd be great, yeah. Um, so then, I guess, uh more just a process question, because, see, I didn't realize that that you all actually were able to do enforcement, like, in the neighborhoods, like, oh, somebody's put, you know, like, I can't see because this person's parked up to the curb or whatever. So you're able to do that, it's just you don't have the capacity at the moment.
That is correct.
Um, so.
When they're out in the field on their regular duties, they will enforce those areas as they walk by them.
I see, I see. So just in terms of for the residents, I mean, right now, we tell them to call nine-one-one if there's a.
That's usually after hours and that's the proper procedures because our officers are uh work, enforce the meters till six. And again, after six o'clock, we usually only have two to uh maximum four officers out there and they're patrolling the surface, the thirty-two surface lots throughout the city that we enforce till ten PM. And on the south side, it's till midnight on the weekends.
Okay, so so the only way that you're, I I'm just trying to, so so for residents, the only way that you, at the moment, because of the capacity issue, that you're able to enforce, like, in the neighbor, not at non-metered spots, is um just if you happen to be in the neighborhood?
Yes.
So if you happen to see him, so it's not, so there isn't actually a way for those calls to get routed to you, like, in case you have somebody in the vicinity so that one of the police officers doesn't have to?
That is correct. And if the violation occurs in front of a private property or requires a vehicle to be towed, we do not tow vehicles. The police have been uh always uh department towing the vehicles, so the Parking Authority does not tow.
So is that a city code thing? Is that something that we can? I mean, it'd be nice if they could just be privately or just sort of wait for the tow truck and then leave when the truck gets there. I don't know. Is that, is that a city ordinance that that keeps us from doing that?
I'm not sure of that answer.
Because my understanding from law enforcement is that they they look at, like, basically, like, a forty, like, to to come and actually enforce, you know, someone's parked in front of my driveway, like, something that actually needs to be as ur- as urgent, otherwise it doesn't get done, right? But if it's urgent, then it's like a forty-minute to an hour.
Yes.
Turnaround time.
All we could do is, uh, if we were there, place a ticket uh on the windshield, but we couldn't move the vehicle.
Is that also a state?
I'd have to verify that. I don't know what prohibits us from doing that.
Okay, okay, well, at any rate, but I mean, a ticket would be a good, a good start, right? I mean, not for the emerges, you know, where it's like a blocked driveway, but um, and then, I guess, this is sort of more, I guess, more of like an existential question, but um in, you know, in the grand scheme of things, as a city and as a county, I I I think there is a, there is a desire to move toward public transit, right? To get people out of their cars and onto the bus and using micromobility and all of these things. And of course, that is, that is, you know, an issue, right? For, because our our pensions are tied to parking, right? To people driving into the city. So I don't know, is that a topic that you've thought about or ways to maybe partner with PRT or, you know, to, so that we can, you know, have fewer cars but not, but but still have that revenue?
No, it's a, we haven't had that conversation. We've uh uh we've been examining and it's an industry concern of curb management now throughout the industry for parking organizations. Uh, so we're looking at that and uh, you know, Pittsburgh is one of the leaders in the industry uh with technology and uh evaluation curb management. But we're also, uh, you know, our hands are tied a little bit with the uh COVID hit. A lot of parking spaces were taken for eateries, uh as bike lanes and we're a proponent of bike lanes, but as they come up, parking goes away. Uh, BRT will probably cost us about seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in lost revenues on our street meters in the next year or two as that's fully implemented out. And I don't have the numbers, but with uh the bike lanes and eateries, we would always uh see a reduction in uh revenues to because of the lost meter spaces.
Yeah, so, I mean, just as a, just kind of looking ahead, you know, you 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 create, I mean, the the issue that we have now, of course, is that our transit isn't at a place where we can just jack up the prices on the parking, right? And really, like, you know, make it expensive, like, if you, like, you're welcome to drive into the city, you know what I mean? You're welcome to drive in, um, but it's gonna cost you a lot to park to kind of make up that difference because our transit isn't always, in some places, it's there, right? But but our transit isn't always at a place to to do that. Um, but it would be, it would be nice, like, if there was some, you know, I mean, even just sitting down with PRT and kind of talk, you know, how can we, you know, meld these two things together, right? Like, you know, so that so that improving our transit actually also can can help to increase um increase revenue for the Parking Authority just by nature of saying, look, you're, and then also increase transit ridership.
When we rolled out the uh upgrade of our meters in the last two years, we did have early conversations with them. We approached them about possibly uh using our meter locations throughout the city to uh load your, is it the Direct Connect card? Uh, but for whatever reason, the talks got delayed and uh for, I guess, budgetary reasons on their side, we couldn't move forward. We had to, you know, go forward without them because it was delaying our project. So we have reached out to them in the past and tried to work with them.
Or even just, like, park and rides, like, on the outskirts of this, or not outs, not of the city, it has to be in the city, I get that. But, you know, there there may be spots that aren't in the heart of our business districts, right? And we could, so we could sort of not have as many cars there and anyway. But I'm I'm glad that you're partnering and talking about those things.
That is, that is kind of the crux of things is where people want to get onto public transport is on the outsides of Pittsburgh, so, and which is out of our purview. And so we can't do anything out there where it actually needs to be to be able to funnel people in. And then the land space here and the cost of trying to build something that would be convenient to come in is isn't as feasible as it should be. So we're kinda stuck between a rock and a hard place.
Anyway, that that's all I have, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Kalkel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just just a couple of things from me. Um, she brings, Councilwoman Warwick brings up an interesting point. We love to see more people use public transit, but at the same time, we don't wanna see our pension fund go broke. So, you know, I don't think we're at that point yet, and maybe many years down the road it will be an issue. You said about the high school students, you're trying to hire David. How much is the pay scale for them coming out of high school for an officer that you're?
For an officer, it's uh, all officers we hire are part-time because you have to be a part of contract to hire a full-time that has to come from a part-time stuff, but I believe it's around eighteen dollars an hour.
And but that's across the board, no matter what level they are, if it's right out of high school.
Well, that's great for a high school.
Yeah.
Somebody just getting out of high school and have you gotten interest through high school?
No, we, it's early discussions with them and we're also uh offering that for our teamsters' jobs, which are full positions, uh, full-time positions, uh, union positions, might be around the same dollar amount with full benefits.
That's great. I I would think and hope that they would jump all over that if, you know, if you didn't have plans to go to college or a trade school, like you said. Uh, I just wanna touch briefly on the parking enhancement districts. Um, implemented by Councilman Kraus and Councilwoman Gross more recently. Um, now, I I love this idea because I feel like it's getting suburbia to pay for our, some of our infrastructure that they use and beat up on a daily basis. I think you gotta be very particular where you use it. Obviously, Lawrenceville is, you know, high, outside traffic comes in there and uses those places. I know South Side is probably, you know, much of the same. Um, and I and I love the idea. Is there anywhere else in the city? Now, I know you're from Brookline, David, and I don't see it working in Brookline because I feel like we'll be gouging our own residents there because I don't feel like we have that outside traffic uh coming through. Is there anywhere else in the city that you can imagine this might work?
Uh, I've been working with uh our board member, Councilman Wilson, for uh North Side and Downtown for events over on the North Shore uh to stadiums. I think that a lot of uh non-city residents are taking advantage of the street parking during these events where we're missing, leaving a lot of revenues on the table.
Absolutely. Uh, I, I love the idea, not for my district in particular, but I love the ideas to, you know, getting that outside revenue.
Events at Heinz or AccuSure Stadium and PNC Park, so it wouldn't be every day. It would be the days that the fields are being occupied.
Yeah, and I like the way um that it was formed. I think you did that, Councilwoman Gross, as to the money is flexible. I know that Councilman Kraus used it as, you know, cleanup crew, which is great, but the money is flexible and you don't care either way. You're just, you're giving us a check and it's all good. So um, so so, yeah, I I would love to see that implemented, like, like you said, Council, your board member, Harry, probably uh could come in handy for him. Uh, okay, I just wanted to touch on that. The uh, when 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 people are riding around, giving tickets, they don't even get out of the car anymore, right?
Today, they do because they gotta be placed on the windshield.
Oh, okay, so they have to get out to place the ticket on the windshield.
We're we're going live on December fourth. We informed the board, uh, we got a pilot program. We'll be issuing tickets at meal on uh two south side lots because we're the property owners, so we don't need anyone's authorization to do that of uh privately owned property.
Right, I've, on occasion, I've been parked up on Broadway Avenue in Beachview and I've, I keep my placard there. I don't put it on the mirror necessarily, um, because it obstructs my view, but I'll put it on my dash. Um, are there officers trying to look for that, right? I had to call you a couple of times.
Sometimes, because we we, everything's by the plate now. We're trying to be automated, trying to get away from the permits that just slows us down for permits and that.
Yeah, and I don't know who else is exempt from parking, I, you know, maybe just council members throughout the city, so, um, maybe you.
No, no, I I pay at the meters when I pull up.
So so they don't necessarily look for the placard, but if we get a citation, uh, I end up on the phone with you, right? Okay, good, good, good. Okay, no, that's that's it for me, thanks. You know, you guys do a great job, I think. Appreciate your time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, I have a few follow-up questions too. Um, I am, was very interested in the discussion about how do we balance kind of where do we have bus service? And where can we raise parking prices in part because people are over-parking or uh because there's just such an influx of visitors to certain neighborhoods? And that, um, and I should know this, and I probably have looked it up before, but I still can't in the moment remember kind of where the eleven parking garages and street lots that, again, you wholly own, kind of like, where are they clustered?
Eight of the garage facilities are in the downtown area.
Okay.
Uh, one's in Shady Side Garage Structure and one in Sun Oakland Garage Structure. Uh, the two-man lots are Second Avenue Plaza by the County Jail and the Mon Wharf. Uh, we treat as garage facilities. And then we have thirty neighborhood metered lots scattered throughout the neighborhoods.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm scribbling down here.
We can send you a listing of all of them.
Yeah, that'd be helpful, so, because what was happening as I was listening to the conversation from other members was I was kind of thinking, like, is there currently a, like, good bus service to where people can park? In your lots? And I'm not sure that there really is. And maybe that's a really excellent line of inquiry for council um to discuss, both with Parking Authority and with PRT. Um, and, um, I can't believe it hasn't occurred to me before because we really struggled in Lawrenceville and when I represented the Strip District, which Councilman Wilson currently represents, we had privately owned parking garages that we wished we could do park and ride from. Like, let's, gosh, look at this nine-hundred-car parking garage that was built in the Strip District. Um, wouldn't it be amazing if we could have, tell visitors, hey, here's where the lots are and then you get out of your car, but there's good bus service to get you to whatever destination you need, especially Sixth Ward, Lawrenceville, Ninth Ward, Lawrenceville, Tenth Ward, Lawrenceville, or to connect to other city neighborhoods. But we have a challenge because those privately owned parking spaces were required by our parking codes with their kind of big parking minimums. So if that parking space is for that apartment, you can't say to the person driving in from Bridgeville, oh, sure, you can pay by the hour and leave your car there for twelve hours because it's required for that apartment. Um, and so you, it had to do shared parking and we spent years kind of looking at how will we have to change our code? What could we do about shared parking? Which I'm still all here for that conversation, but now it occurs to me maybe we should be looking at how to encourage parking and riding for visitors to the city from our city-owned lots. That I just don't think it's really obvious to the visitor from, you know, Vinango County or from Southern Allegheny County or somewhere else. Is that something we could maybe continue to talk about or it could be helpful?
Lots are uh during the day suitable for that because most of the, the majority, well, we do have some vacancies, uh, but there are, the the prime lots are filled during the day.
You're seventy-four percent parked at your garages.
Garages, not the surface lots.
Yeah.
Those are already downtown.
Yeah, and they're downtown, but still, again, do I know, kind of like, if I'm from Bridgeville, where is, you know, the whole Port Authority bus system is kind of a secret society. It's helpful now that your phone tells you kind of where to go to to catch a bus, um, but that's not really integrated with, like, where's the parking garage as an integrated trip, which we're now doing now. We we did it with micromobility, right, or PRT did. Like, here's how to get from a bus to a rental car or a scooter or a rental bike so that you can have these kind of legs of your trip. Um, and you can plan ahead and not be halfway to your destination and feel like abandoned and confused and not know where to go next. Um, and so that's part of the, that's part of the challenge. I I would be happy to continue that conversation, which only kind of partly involves Parking Authority, but maybe we don't all have facilities exactly where it would be helpful to be part of a transit trip. Uh, because we built them to service, like, the business storefront a block away, right? And so we were thinking of them as, here's where we should have a surface lot or a parking garage for the local employer or their local shopping that's right near it, not to coordinate with, like, how to move around the city by transit. So I love that question. And again, it would be encouraging people to use our facilities, but also use transit. So parking and riding into the city and not parking outside the city and riding in.
There is a current app that'll identify uh not only our garages, private operator garages, which have availability as you're coming into downtown area, you can look it up and it'll tell you which garages are full and which ones.
What's it called? It's not Tiramisu. It's not, that was the parking way to one, the Cultural District app, which was created many years ago now. But we haven't added other neighborhood lots into them. Or the parking, like, so should you say parking garage is not loaded? Because we we talked to the, who's managing now? Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership manages it? And we talked to them about maybe adding in the um parking locations in the Strip District again when I represented it. It just, and then we hit COVID, it didn't happen. Uh, but if we could add in where other parking capacity is, it would help guide people to those parking spaces. Um, and then, but how do they travel around the city once they do that? If, you know, let's say they park in the downtown parking garage, but actually they really wanna go to Shady Side or they really wanna go to Lawrenceville, they kind of have to figure it out on their own. So maybe we can make it easier for them. And I was gonna follow up one more question on the revenue. I had Mr. McDevitt look at. the revenue, I had Mr. McDevitt look at the ordinance about the Parking Authority, which revenue streams from the Parking Authority are diverted to, straight to the city pension fund. Our ordinance says parking tax. And yet, we know the parking meter revenue is also diverted to pensions, and that's why to do the mobility enhancement districts, we have to add new revenue. And only that portion of that new revenue can be diverted to the neighborhood infrastructure. Could you speak to that, is it housed in the co-op, in the co-op? Is it, was it part of an initiation, because it's not required under ordinance that parking meter revenue, not that I can read.
Yes, uh, it's part of the city co-op agreement between the Parking Authority and the uh city. With that, uh, parking court revenues, net revenues, that, well, let me step back. We have a parking court agreement with the city, where a hundred percent of net revenues of parking court go to the city. Uh, we have a meter revenue agreement in the co-op where the first four point six million, the authority gets to keep plus uh credit card fees and contract fees with our uh multi-space meters, which average about two, two and a half million dollars. So we keep roughly about the first six point six million dollars of meter revenues. All excess meter revenues go to the city until uh we reach eighteen point five, and then we start splitting it fifty fifty, it gives us an incentive to uh try to increase revenues. We also uh share the Mon Wharf per the agreement revenues. Uh, we split that revenue with the city fifty fifty after parking tax expense. Uh, real estate taxes uh go, as part of that fund, we go to, and uh payment in lieu of taxes of one point nine million dollars, we give to the city. But that has since been waived for ten years, which will come back on the books in twenty thirty-two, uh, when COVID hit. Uh, we were supposed to receive funding, some fundings from the uh government, that the federal government, the city receives, so we worked out an agreement to uh keep us afloat, we waived the one point nine million. And then there's the parking tax, which is thirty-seven and a half percent of all garage uh receipts and surface metered lot receipts.
Thirty-seven and a half percent?
Yes.
Well, thanks for pointing that out, that's a whopper.
Yes.
Yes, but that is part of.
You can order it if you want.
But that's what, part of it's coming to us for that pension contribution. So, yeah, it's interesting. Um, well, you know, you you tax what you want to disincentivize. Uh, and so if we're wanting to disincentivizing cars and encouraging transit, we would not be lowering the parking tax, so that's kind of how, you know, general public policy. Um, and it's definitely part of the debate here at City Council. Um, so thank you for going through that, for the record, since that was even faster than I could take notes on. The co-op in its entirety should be on the controller's website, I assume.
I don't know.
I wasn't able to find it on open book, I just found the file like in in the Budget Office stuff.
I can, I can share a summary.
I love asking that questions, it's shocking to me how many times the um large and impactful um contracts and cooperation agreements are failing to be on um in public disclosure, so. It's not, not you, not you, not just you, there's lots of other places.
In twenty fifteen, it was, it was amended in twenty fifteen to those changes I just noted, but it was in front of council, had approved the amendments.
I think we have, we've had two amendments since the the original co-op agreement, so smaller ones.
But we're, we're projecting.
Usually, you know, very often, council does not get the final language, and so it's not in our legislative record. Uh, something that I have a particular thing on, so let's just follow up, um, because it's a really important budgetary contract, so we should definitely make sure that it's either in our legislative record, we could just read it into the record if we needed to. Um, and also probably on open book, so thank you.
Right, based on those co-op agreements we just said, our twenty-three estimate is twenty-two point seven million will come to the city, and in twenty-four, it's twenty-three point four million, which is about forty percent of our gross revenues we're giving right back to the city.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate that, it's really, really important to our balancing our budget and um keeping a healthy pension fund. Do, that's all I have for now, I appreciate that, do members have any more questions, Councilman?
I just had one, and I don't, I, so, one. This has always been something that's a little murky with with P R T, so, you know, we give free tea, you know, you can ride the tee for free in downtown, right? And so on game day, or, you know, these large events, not just on game day, but on on all the large events, people come in and then they park in these private lots outside of downtown, and then they ride the tee in for free. So not only are you losing money, Port Authority is losing money on like so many people, you know? Um, so is that something that, I, I mean, I'm sure that the, that the, the I mean, I I guess I would like to know more about, if that's ever something that that you all have talked about, I'd like to kind of know more about the background of that, because it seems like it's just money being lost for two agencies.
No, I mean, we work with the private operators too, but when we we built, constructed First Avenue Garage, we worked with the Port Authority. Uh, and we established, there's a tee station right in that garage, and it's a free uh ride from that station, it's the most furthest from downtown. So on game days at AccuSure Stadium, we have a uh twelve hundred space garage here, we're averaging eight hundred and nine hundred cars a day there with people hopping on the tee going over to the stadium on the north shore. So we do work with uh the Steelers and Pirates and the Port Authority to promote that as a prime location, to be out of the traffic coming into the north shore and out of it, after the game, you hop on a tee, ride to the garage, and you exit the uh garage without sitting in the traffic. And uh, we do see people parking at our garages too, because we're the uh uh lowest cost provider of parking. So we usually fill up first, and then we either walk to the north shore for events or take the tee over at different stations there. So we get our sheer number of working with the authority too, and they promote us as the low-cost provider of parking. What really hurt us the last three years was the closure of the Clemente Bridge uh because it was walkable from our garages to the north shore from both stadiums, and since that's closed, it added quite a height where uh people have to go out of their way to get to the stadiums now, so we'll be glad to see that open next month.
Okay, okay, so that, and and that, that it works out for you?
Yes.
It's good, okay, okay.
All right, that's all I think we have for questions today, again, thank you for your patience, thank you for being here, thank you for the parking revenue. And um, we look forward to seeing you again, I'm going to call this meeting in recess.